Good evening. My name is Beth Margeson, and on behalf of the Citizens for Voter Education, welcome to this evening's Candidates Forum. The Citizens for Voter Education have been conducting election forums for nearly 40 years under the auspices of the Portsmouth Public Library. The group's mission is to provide opportunities for the candidates to present themselves to the public and for the public to ask questions of those candidates. It does not support or endorse candidates. Tonight, we'll hear from the candidates for Police Commission and School Board. The Fire Commissioner candidates are running unopposed and have ceded their time tonight to the contested races. For School Board, Jen Schump and Roy Helsel could not be here in person and asked that a statement be read on their behalf, which I will do shortly. Now for some voting information. The election will be held on Tuesday, November 4th. The polls will be open from 8:00 a.m. until 7:00 p.m. Polling locations are as follows. Ward 1, New Franklin School. Ward 2, Portsmouth Middle School. Ward 3, Portsmouth Senior Activity Center. Ward 4, Don Darrow Elementary School. And Ward 5, Little Harbor School. If you are unsure where to vote, please check with the City Clerk section of the city website. Call (603) 610-7245, or email the City Clerk at cityclerk@porsamthenh.gov. The following information about voting is found on the City Clerk section of the website, which is www.porsamthenh.gov. Please consult it for the most up-to-date, complete information about voting, as some requirements have changed in the last year. Here are some highlights. They're very long. Registering to Vote. If you have not, if you, the last day for registering to vote was last week, October 22nd. You may still register at the polls on Election Day. To register, you must show proof of citizenship, such as a birth certificate, passport, naturalization papers, a citizenship affidavit, or any other document deemed reasonable by the registrars. You must show proof that you're 18 or older, and proof of residence, such as a utility bill, rental agreement, or mortgage statement. The documents must show your street address. No post office boxes or business addresses are acceptable. Actually Voting. The voter ID law requires that you show a photo ID in order to vote. You may use a valid driver's license, DMV ID card, U.S. Armed Service ID, U.S. passport, valid New Hampshire student ID, or any ID that contains a picture of yourself. For voting purposes, a picture ID that expired no more than five years ago is sufficient to vote. If you don't have a photo ID, you can have your identity verified by an election official, or you will be allowed to retrieve a photo ID. I saw my first yawn from the audience. Voting by Absentee Ballot. Absentee ballots are now available if you'll be absent from the city on Election Day. There are changes to the absentee ballot process. Any individual registering to vote by absentee for a qualified reason must provide proof of their U.S. citizenship and age, in addition to domicile and identity with their registration. Registered voters who request an absentee ballot must show proof of their identity to receive their absentee ballot. If sending their absentee ballot requests by mail, the voter must include a copy of their photo identification or a notarized signature on their absentee ballot application form. If the voter is obtaining their absentee ballot in person, they must show their city or town clerk photo identification, digital proof is also accepted, or a notarized signature on their absentee ballot application form. The deadlines to request absentee ballots are the same, remain the same. Voters must request their absentee ballots by 5:00 p.m. in person the day before an election, or be received by 12:00 p.m. the day before the election by mail or email. Sample ballots for all of the wards have been posted on the City Clerk's website. There are three ballot questions for this year's election. The first is whether to allow the operation of social districts in the city of Portsmouth. The second is whether to prohibit the operation of Keno games within the city of Portsmouth. The third is whether to prohibit the operation of games of chance within the city of Portsmouth. Please see your sample ballot for the full text. Members of the audience here tonight are invited to submit written questions for the candidates. There are pencils and note cards on the chairs for this purpose. Just raise your hand, your question will be picked up. If we receive multiple questions on the same topic, they may be combined. Now let us hear finally from the candidates themselves. For the Police Commission, each candidate has prepared a two-minute opening statement in which they have been asked to answer the question, "What are the two most critical challenges facing our city's police department?" Mr. Dozier, would you like to remain there for your opening statement, or you, would you like to come up and make it here?
Hey, if it's okay, I'll stay right here.
Okay.
It's a great thing to see you people here tonight. I think it's really important for our citizenry to take a responsible position, and I'm really glad to see that. I'm a lifelong member, resident of the city of Portsmouth, and I just turned 79 a few weeks ago. And that doesn't mean I'm really old. That means I'm still very much young at heart. And just to give you a very quick background before I answer those questions, I grew up of parents, my dad was 22 years in submarine service at the shipyard, and 22 years in the post office in Portsmouth. And my mom was daughter of two Ukrainian immigrants, and I'm very proud of both of them and their time raising three boys, and I'm the youngest of the three. I grew up at Wentworth School, which was part of Wentworth Acres, and then my folks moved to Panaway Manor, so I became a student at Sherburne School. I went to UNH, got my degree, went on to Plymouth, and got through the first year of my master's in education. And I had to pull out because I had a diagnosis of esophageal cancer. Went through chemo and radiation, had my esophagus removed, but here I am. I'm a fighter to the finish, and I'm very interested in the seat on the Portsmouth Police Commission because I believe in community. And I believe that the two biggest issues the police department has are, one, clearly a place to run the operation, and there's lots of complexities to making that come about, and it's taken several years. The last thing is the staffing and retention of people. That's it.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Tom Hart.
Thank you, and good luck to everybody. It's nice to see this. And what I want to start out by saying is we have a great PD, and we have a lot of great personnel within, and I want to keep it that way. I've done this job before, and I know I can do it again, and I want to be the conduit for the people to the PD. Just a little history of my family. We have three generations in Portsmouth. I was born and raised here. My father came here as a Marine, and he was a prison guard at the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard Prison. He came over into Portsmouth quite often on break, and he met my mother at a restaurant, and they got married and had five boys and raised five boys in Portsmouth. I'm the middle child, so no offense against that, but I was kind of the referee. And I loved growing up in Portsmouth. I went through Portsmouth High School and graduated in '82, and married my high school sweetheart, Megan Driscoll, who's in the audience. We've been married for 40 years. We have two boys and four grandchildren. I have a criminal justice degree and 28 years law enforcement, retired. I was on the Police Commission during some trying times during COVID and when George Floyd protests. And I was with Stephanie Shaheen and Joe Inosco, and we were a great team, working together with the PD during those times. We were able to adopt the body cameras and mental health teams and promote Mark Newport to chief. Now, I'm going to skip right down to the two challenges, because I'm running out of time. The two challenges we have are the building has to be built. This has been 10 years in existence, and this has to be done without kicking the can down the road anymore. As far as retention, I agree. We have a lot of lateral transfers now going out of the PD instead of into the PD. It's costing the taxpayers money in overtime, and that has to be addressed, and I have a solution for that. And that's my time, and I look forward to the questions from everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Jay Lieberman.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jay Lieberman. I'm a candidate for Police Commission, and like the majority of Portsmouth's population, I'm actually not from here. Our family chose to move to town in 2015, and my wife and I have been married for 24 years. We have a son at Portsmouth High School and a daughter who's a sophomore in college. During my professional career, I ran a $15 million business, recruited and hired employees, launched new products, and managed multiple budgets. For the last 18 years, I've been in finance, and before that, I spent 10 years as a newspaper and magazine publisher in the Midwest. I served six years on the board of a local nonprofit healthcare company. I was a graduate of Leadership Seacoast in 2021, a member of the Blue Ribbon Sustainability Committee, a volunteer for many years at War II on Election Day, and I was elected by my peers as War II selectmen. Lastly, I served on an endowment committee of a local religious organization. In addition to the police station that's been mentioned, the two most critical challenges that I see facing our city's police department are recruitment and retention. Over half of our patrol officers have been with the police department for less than five years. We've lost several officers, even in the last few months, to other departments that offer significantly more money and that are in lower-cost-of-living communities. Along with the state of the police station, this is contributing to low morale for some of our officers. Number two, mental health is the defining crisis of our time. National and state cuts in healthcare funding have impacted some of our most vulnerable residents. We have one social worker at the police department. I'd like to follow the Dover, New Hampshire model that has a staff of four acting in both proactive and reactive roles. I believe we can add to our team without increasing the budget through opioid abatement funds and adding college interns. Lastly, I'll just say, please join me for my last two coffees with a candidate. One is tomorrow morning from 7:30 to 9:00 a.m. at Cafe Von Somm downtown. The other one is Saturday, 10:30 to noon at Cafe Killam on Islington. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we hear from Boucher.
Evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming out here, and thank you for, to those who are hosting this event. It's very important. My name is Buzz. Nobody really actually knows my last name anymore, but as my, as my daughter told me to say whenever I talk to people, it's easy to vote for me. I'm the only Buzz on the ballot. I've been in Portsmouth for 30 years. My wife and I have been here for 30 years. We've raised two children, and I have three grandchildren now. I now refer to my oldest daughter, the mother of my grandchildren, as my former daughter. Now, I'm merely the handler of my grandchildren. She, she resents that, but welcome to family. I've been in the criminal justice system in New Hampshire for 45 years, just about 45 years. I started out as a public defender in New Hampshire. I was a public defender from 1981 to 1994. I've, I was, been a law professor at University of New Hampshire School of Law in Concord for the last 32 years. I'm now in semi-retirement. I have been, I've chaired the Board of Directors for the ACLU of New Hampshire for seven years. I've really seen the criminal justice system from 360 perspective, from all sorts of different perspectives. I know what a good police department is. I know what a bad police department is. We have one of the best police departments in the state. The two things that I think are most important are, number one, the mental health crisis in New Hampshire has not, has not excluded Portsmouth. We need to, we have, we, a year and a half ago, we hired a social worker, and we need to hire more, because they give the police another option other than just arresting somebody with mental health struggles and sending them to jail or letting them go free. The second thing is, as others have talked about, we need to pull the trigger on a police station, one way or another. The police station is not fit for 21st century police department. Everybody agrees that. We're trying to sort out the best way to do it, the cheapest way to do it, but we need to do it soon. Every year we delay, it costs an extra million dollars in construction cost. So we've spent $3 million already. By kicking this can down the road for three years, we need to get there. Thank you.
Now, some questions from the audience. The first two, the first are for Mr. Dozier and Mr. Hart. What does a police commissioner do?
Am I first?
Mr. Dozier is first.
Okay. Well, this is, you know, it's pretty obvious that the issue of the police commissioner is to be an interface between the police department and the community, to listen to what the community says and to listen to what the police department says, and to end up somehow meshing those ideas and proposals to come up with something that's productive. And it's certainly been demonstrative over the past, as Buzz said, 10 years for the issue of building a police station. I would say it is key that both sides work together, the community and the police department in general.
Thank you. Mr. Hart, the same question to you.
Thank you. It's a great question, because while I've been campaigning, people say, what do the, what does the police commission do? And it's, and it's good to hear this. We're a conduit for, like I said, for the people to the PD to go out there and listen to see what the people want. You're also an oversight committee on the other end for the police department to make sure everything's run properly. We are CLIA certified. It's a certified PD, and it's a top-tier certified PD, so it comes with a lot of regulations and a lot of SOPs, standard operating procedures, and we are there to oversee that to make sure that's done properly. And it's a good thing, because we've come a long way, and there's not a lot of PEDs in this state that have that CLIA certification like our PD does. So we should be proud of that, and that's part of the police commission's job, is to make sure that's run properly, communicate with the chief, communicate with all the staff inside, which I can't say enough about the staff, because I worked with them before when I was a police commissioner. And it was a great thing to see, me being from law enforcement, 20 years retired. I really enjoy working with this police department, and I'd like to do it again.
The next question is for Mr. Lieberman and Boucher. What role does the police commission have in officer promotions? Does it define the process, or does it actively approve officer promotions?
Can you hear me?
Hello? Okay. Thank you. My understanding is that the commissioners don't define the process, but they must approve promotions at a certain level and above. So you'll often see the meetings, recordings of the meetings where the families of the officers will come and watch their loved ones get promoted.
We just actually had a, the oral boards for, to fill a slot in detectives earlier this week on Monday. With a process, a candidate, let me back up. The police commission doesn't hire patrolmen, but one of, once a patrolman wants to be a detective, gets promoted to detective, or a patrolman officer gets promoted to sergeant or lieutenant or captain, that's the final responsibilities with the police commission to make that promotion. So they go through a written test, they go through oral boards within the police department, they get scored on that, and then the police commission has a hearing where we hear from the, in this case, last Monday, we hear from the three candidates, and they're asked each or asked the same questions. And then the police commission makes the decision. We hear from the captains, we hear from the deputy chief and the chief, what their recommendation is, but it's our final decision as to who gets promoted.
Thank you. Because we've received four audience questions, I'm going to suspend my own rules here and ask each candidate an individual question, rather than have two candidates answer one question, just so that we can accommodate as many questions as possible. Mr. Hart, the first question is to you. Where would you build a new police station, and why is that the right spot?
I would keep it right here. I was born in this building, so the building's old, but I'm not. I just want to make that clear. And it used to be a hospital, but there is a lot of potential here. I think if you, if you put the building here and you did the right addition to the building, and you gut the people out of the basement, the basement is the biggest problem here, where the mold is growing constantly. It gets cleaned and it comes back. There's no way around it. We can do it here. We can make this a complex with City Hall and the police department and do it the right way, and I think that's the most cost-efficient way to do it, and I think it would make the morale here a lot better, because I, right now, this has been over 10 years, and personnel think that people don't want to do this, because this is a great PD. So give them something back. Give them something in return, and give them a nice place to work out of. They're there 24/7. When we're sleeping, they're there working. This has to be a nice environment, and I'm pushing for that.
Thank you. Next question is to you, Mr. Dozier. There was much voter concern at the meeting with city council candidates about costs and the $150 million city budget. What will you do to control or reduce costs in the fire, in the police department?
Well, one of the things that I've thought about in this whole budgetary issue is to really look at each line item in the budget for the police department and go over it and rank it in a scale of, say, 1 to 4, 1 to 5, in terms of importance, or a period of time in which it should be implemented, and in fact, being very particular about each of those line items. Because I think what we hear in the general trend about the budget is it's overwhelming, and it continues to grow, and the only way I think we can end up at least putting some curb on it is to be able to address each line item with a level of importance, and then go back and see if we can end up trimming some of those costs.
Thank you. Next question is to Boucher. Have you benchmarked your organization, meaning the police department, against organizations in cities of comparable size, such as Keene, New Hampshire, which has 22,000 residents? If so, what did you find?
We've done it more broadly than that. There has been, over the last two years, there's been a comprehensive staffing study done by an independent outside national agency to see what the staffing needs of the city of Portsmouth are. We've also had a space need study, two space need studies done. The problem with benchmarking against other cities is this. We are not Keene, New Hampshire. You cannot, there is no formula. Every police expert we've talked to said, there's no simple formula, one police officer for X thousands of people. It depends on the nature of the city. We are a destination city. We are a tourist location. We're different than Keene, and, and we have, we have P's out there with a lot of industry out there. We have the shipyard. We have the, the three bridges. We have any number of events occurring all the time. We have more hotels, you know, three times the number of hotels in Portsmouth as in Dover or Keene. So yes, we've done benchmarking, but we've also paid attention to the uniqueness of Portsmouth.
Thank you. Mr. Lieberman, this may not be a fair question for you, but are e-bikes and scooters a traffic or pedestrian problem in Portsmouth? Do we need new ordinances or better or more policing?
Well, I lucked out, because I was at the e-bike forum a couple of weeks ago, and I-
That was lucky.
Yeah. I live on Wybert Street, and there's a couple of what seem to be 10-year-olds that do wheelies at night, as late as like 10:00 at night. I'm glad that they're outside and, you know, getting fresh air, but I think that it's just a matter of time before somebody gets really hurt. I go to the monthly Police Commission meetings, and at the forum, they mentioned that, the deputy chief mentioned that there have been, from June through September, 70 different times where the police have had to talk to these young kids that are zipping around on town, around town on their e-bikes. And the problem is they're motorcycles, but they're called e-bikes. So I don't know if I answered the question, but I think it's a big problem. I think we need local ordinances. The problem is it's a big gray area, because there's no national mandate or blueprint for how to create the ordinances, but I just don't want to see kids get hurt and don't want to see a pedestrian get mowed down. So yeah, that's, that's my perspective on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, candidates, for the third round, we will ask you to choose a question from the first two rounds that you were not asked, but that you would like to answer, and if you need the question repeated to you, I can do that. We'll start with Mr. Dozier.
I don't, I don't remember all those questions. So you want- So you want me to try to remember one to address?
Yes. That's the rule.
Oh, great.
Perhaps you would like to address the question, "Where would you be, build a new police station and why is that the right spot?"
Okay. I've done a lot of thinking about the fact that indeed, this, this was a hospital and that the police station kind of got pushed into the spot where they're at. But I, I've taken a course at the police station and recognized that that was where I washed glassware in the laboratory when I was a kid in Portsmouth. And now it's a classroom where I learned Portsmouth Community Police Academy. And I would say to you that they need a better place. And this issue about mold, it is very critical that they get to a place where they can be well-protected. They don't deserve what they've been dealing with. And some of that mold may show itself up in retirement years for them, and I think it needs to be addressed now.
Thank you. Tom Hart?
I'll, I'll go with the budget because I'm, I'm a taxpayer, we're all taxpayers here. So as far as the budget goes, the way to help out the taxpayer is to prevent people from leaving our PD. Back in the day, when there were police officers in town when I grew up, you knew them all and they were here for a long time. And that's retention. And if you can get retention and stop having people leave on lateral transfers to other PDs for more money, that's cost-effective. Right now, we have so much overtime in our budget. Right now, we're at a critical 62 officers and we need 70 to be the staff. We are at 50% staff in the dispatch. That's no way to run effectively. You have to fix that problem. Once you fix that problem, you're going to save money in the long run for the taxpayers and you're going to make it a happier place for the officers so they're not spending all the overtime. They're getting ordered over when they work a shift. They get ordered over if they don't have an officer to replace them on the next shift. And I did that and it makes for a long day and it makes for a tough family environment at home. So that retention is, is a big situation.
Jay Lee Bruman?
Just to follow that on the retention idea, we're, we're budgeted for 70 officers. We've got 62. It's a constant struggle to recruit. It's not just a Portsmouth problem, it's nationwide. So one thing we might want to look at is just saying, you know, let's work with what we have and let's keep the good people that we have. It's a lot harder to find new people than to keep your current folks happy. So maybe there's a way we can find in the budget to just say, "We're going to have 62 and let's pay them a little bit more and keep them happy and keep them here." When you've got people going to small towns, getting lured away in New Hampshire and making $90,000, $20,000 or $30,000 more than they're making here for a much lower cost of living, it's, it's just a numbers game, right? They might love Portsmouth, but they've got to feed a family. And I've done ride-alongs and talked to officers that have second jobs. And our municipal workers should be able to have a living wage and not have two jobs. It's a stressful enough career that I don't think that's too much to ask. And we're doing pretty well. Our call count, our calls for service are down and they're doing a good job of holding the law. And I think we should try to keep the people that we have happy.
Buzz Shear?
I'm going to also talk about the reduction in costs in two ways. One, I disagree with Jay in that we cannot operate a police department effectively in this city with 62 officers. It'll be a huge amount of overtime that's not going to save any money, number one. Number two, this last budget cycle, the police, other than the library, the police department had the smallest increase of any department in the city. And we, we didn't even get the 70 officers we need. The city council unfunded two positions. So the, the fire department and the school department had much more significant increases. We didn't even meet, the, the increase we got just met our step increases that come with each year. We didn't get any extra money. So we're already saving money compared to other departments in the city. It's time that we look at other departments rather than try to balance the city budget on the police department.
Thank you. Now the candidates will address the, the form here, address the audience here with a one-minute closing statement. We'll start with Gary Dozier.
I didn't get to mention in my introduction that I spent 55 years of my life in information technology management. And a portion of that prior was in printing, publishing, graphics. I was editor of an international personal computing magazine and wrote lots of articles. Now, that doesn't seem to be related to police commission work, but it involves a lot of thinking, a lot of planning, a lot of discussion, a lot of budgeting. I worked as the first chief of the computer information center at the U.S. Army Intelligence School at Fort Devens. And there I needed to look at the budget, look at the operations, and look at how they ran the intel school's computer needs. So I feel pretty strong about making a difference on the police commission.
Thank you. Tom Hart?
Thank you. Public safety is my passion. I've done it most of my life and I love to do it. The first time I was on the commission, I was appointed by a citizens panel and a city council. And if you can have trust in a citizens panel that interviewed nine candidates and picked me, and a city council that picked me as a police commissioner, and I served and I have a track record, then you can have confidence in voting for me this time around. I want to thank Stephanie Shaheen for endorsing me for this position. I work with Stephanie and Mary Carey-Foley. I also want to thank my wife for kind of putting up with me through this campaign again. And lastly, I want to dedicate this to my mom. She passed away last Saturday and she would have loved to have been here for, for this. I'm sorry. It's good. I tried. I didn't know if I could get through it, but.
Jay Lee Bruman?
My condolences, Tom, to you and your family. I just want to circle back to one of my comments earlier regarding mental health crisis. We're seeing a lot of national state cuts in healthcare subsidies for families to have insurance. And of course, New Hampshire is a disaster for mental health funding. And if you ever have had anybody in your family, your friends in the system, you know what I'm talking about. All that's going to trickle down to the most vulnerable people in our community. And it's a lot to ask our police officers to also be social workers. I think we're in the right direction with one social worker, but I think we can really boost what we have by finding state and federal grants to help complement that and be more proactive in the community and help people that are vulnerable before things become a problem, before it becomes a law enforcement issue. So I appreciate your consideration and I'll see you at the polls on Tuesday.
Buzz Shear?
Thank you. And my sympathies to Tom also.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Last four years, we've gotten a lot done on the police commission. As of May of this year, every officer has a body-worn camera. When I ran the first time, most of the officers in the department were opposed to body-worn cameras. We now have them and they love them. We now have a social worker on staff who's been great, as I described earlier. We have a grant application in the works for federal funding for, or state funding for another social worker, which is really important. We've had engagement, the police department has engaged with the mobile crisis units that in the right circumstances will send two mental health professionals to a scene where somebody has mental health problems rather than two officers. We have a new data tracking system and demographic trafficking system in place as of next week so that we can measure how the police department is doing. We have gotten two rounds of raises for the police officers. We're still falling behind, but we've gotten two rounds of raises over the last four years. So I will leave you again with what my daughter said. It's easy to vote for me. I'm the only buzz on the ballot.
Thank you very much, police commission candidates. We are going to invite the school board candidates up. If, we're asking you to arrange yourself alphabetically. I'm hoping as school board candidates you can. But in case not, Phyllis Eldredge will be able to help you and water will be replenished for the school board candidates. And I think we have a lighting problem there at the back. Okay.
Kennedy.
Kennedy.
Adler, right?
Adler, yes.
And Flaver, probably.
Beckstead.
Beckstead.
Yes, I am.
Gary Dozier.
I'll be right back.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, well, that's a-
I don't know. Yeah, 3 and 3.
No worries. I'll do what I'm told.
I'm sorry.
I was probably a little screwed up because I said Beckstead over here.
No, no.
We really can't do this.
Thank you. I believe that we are waiting for somebody.
Yeah, Steve. I guess he must have gone to the mess room.
Steve Adler. Yes.
He was here.
Yeah, he was here.
Well, while we're waiting for Steve, I will let the audience know what the question we have asked each candidate to answer, to include in their two-minute opening statement, and that is, "What are the two most critical questions facing our city schools?" Actually, I will have a way to sort of fill the airtime here because I do have, there are two candidates who cannot be here tonight. One is Roy Helsell and one is Jen Shumpf. So I'm going to read the opening statement from both of those candidates while we, here comes Steve, while we wait for Steve. But this following statement is from Roy Helsell. "I am Roy Helsell, 777 Middle Road, Unit 22, Portsmouth. I am 89 years old, a bachelor degree in business management at UNH and retired. I am running for school board. I am running in order to support measures in education that helps all Portsmouth students to be successful, among those with special needs as well as the multilingual students. The special ed services provide those with specific needs as the ESOL services the multilingual students from grade school through high school. I believe these services improve not only the quality of life for these students and their families, but our community as well. This allows them academic success in school and life beyond." I hope, and he said, "I hope this is what you needed. I have a very old computer and it doesn't cooperate." Thanks, Roy Helsell. The next statement is from Jen Shumpf. "Good evening and thank you for being here tonight. I want to start by thanking the city for adjusting plans with tomorrow's storm on the way. Like many Portsmouth families, I'm out trick-or-treating with my kids this evening. And that balance between family and community is exactly why I'm running for school board. I'm a mom with children in Portsmouth schools and I want to make sure every child in this community has a chance to succeed. I'm running as an educator, a mom, and an advocate. I've taught in classrooms across the globe from public schools in New Hampshire and California to private international schools abroad, and I've taught right here in Portsmouth. I've mentored teacher candidates, taught education courses at the college level, and navigated the special education process as a parent. These experiences give me both a local and global perspective on what works with students and how to support the educators who make it happen. Portsmouth has so many strengths: incredible teachers, supportive families, and students who inspire us every day. But like many districts, we face challenges that require thoughtful, steady leadership. One priority is strengthening curriculum consistency across our schools. Our teachers are doing excellent work, but the resources and training they receive aren't always aligned. As a board, we can help by setting clear goals for evidence-based, high-quality instruction and ensuring, by ensuring educators have the time and professional learning they need to do their best work. When we invest in teachers, every classroom benefits. A second priority is supporting student well-being and belonging. Portsmouth has taken important steps in this area, but we need to make sure those social-emotional supports are sustainable and accessible so every child feels safe, connected, and ready to learn. I have the honor of, if I have the honor of serving on the school board, I'll listen carefully, collaborate openly, and keep students at the center of every decision. I believe we can strengthen what's already great in Portsmouth while ensuring excellent and opportunity reach every classroom. Thank you." So with that aside, we will hear from the candidates themselves and we will start with Steve Adler.
Thank you. Good evening. You know, friends have asked me, "You've spent 40 years working in education. You are now happily retired. You get, in the summertime, you get to ride bicycles and take people on historic tours right through Portsmouth. In the wintertime, you get to go skiing and help people with disabilities learn how to ski. Why would you run for the school board?" I've lived in Portsmouth for well over 30 years. My children went to Little Harbor School, Portsmouth Middle School, and Portsmouth High School. One of the pleasures that my wife and I have is just watching the kids, the new crop of kids who are living on our street, play on that street, ride their bicycles up and down. They're out there, sometimes they're fighting with their siblings. And they're also out there with their parents, they're shooting basketballs. And the reason I'm running for school board is really simple. I want those children to have the same positive experience that my kids had going through the Portsmouth schools. There are a number of significant issues that are facing the Portsmouth schools, one of which is that we need to create a fiscally responsible budget while still providing quality education for students. This will be challenging. There are already built-in increases in the budget through contract obligations and healthcare. It's critical that New Franklin get the renovation it needs so that the space in that school is equal and is the same quality as the other two elementary schools. And we also have to strengthen our special ed budget so we can reduce our out-of-district student placement for special ed. Our second challenge that we have is the redistricting plan has not yet been successful and we need to continue to work on that. I bring 25 years of experience as an elementary school, as an elementary principal, 13 years as a classroom teacher, and two years as a teacher in residence and lecturer at UNH. And I'll use that experience to collaborate with other school board members, school administration, parents in the community to support the Portsmouth schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy Novaleen Clayberg.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Nancy Novaleen Clayberg. I have had the honor and pleasure of serving our community for the past 25 years as both a school board member and a city counselor. For the past four years, I have served as the school board chair, a position I have truly enjoyed. Putting together a school budget that serves our students well is always a huge challenge for our board. Our goal is to ensure that each and every student has a successful and productive journey. According to U.S. News &amp; World Report, Portsmouth High School is number 12 in our state, our middle school is number 9, and our elementaries are in the top 22, New Franklin being number 6. In NIECH, another school research company, has Portsmouth as the fourth highest-ranking school district in the state. That is awesome. Why? I believe that our schools for many years have had incredible support from our city and our citizens. We have a healthy budget. Almost half of the city budget goes to the school department. I guess it's fair to say, "You get what you pay for." However, our board has always been mindful of ways we can be more responsible. At the present moment, we are studying our special education costs to determine if we can be more efficient in how we deliver these services. Our cost for students we place out of district is high and our staff is currently scrutinizing these costs and will report to the board in our next budget season. Another issue that is a concern in affecting school budgets is- Another issue that is a concern in affecting school budgets is mandates coming down from the state of New Hampshire. I think many were satisfied with the no-cellphone policy in our schools that began this fall. Initial reports are telling us that this is working very well. However, legislation that removed the income cap for families applying for the Educational Freedom Act and the open enrollment program that could possibly take effect next fall will put a strain on all school budgets. Our board will closely monitor these issues. I look forward to working again on the school board if you all support me on November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian French.
Thank you to the citizens for voter education and for hosting. Brian French, for eight years I've served on the Portsmouth School Board, including the last two as vice chair. I've also served on the library board of trustees and previously have served on the rec board. A proud dad of two PHS freshmen, Arianna and Isabella, and a Don Darrow fifth grader, Landon. I know the life-changing power of public education. As a kid, I was sometimes worried about food and housing, but dedicated teachers made sure I had access to great education. That opportunity shaped my life, and that's why I serve. My focus is simple: keep classrooms strong and students at the center. Portsmouth is at a crossroads. Student needs are rising while budgets keep shifting. State funding is uncertain, and statewide open enrollment looming, we must plan ahead to protect our students' opportunities and support our educators. At the same time, kids need more: special education, mental health supports, and first-rate teachers and paraprofessionals, all while soaring house prices make recruiting and retention harder. So here's my plan: build clear multi-year budget scenarios that surface cost drivers and hit strategic targets, and brief the city council early on trends so we can plan together. Explore in-district special education options to reduce costly out placements. Lister has shown that is what is possible here. Explore ways to grow our own talent via pair-to-teacher pathways, targeted stipends, strong mentoring, and making Portsmouth a destination for paraprofessionals and educators. Coordinate with Rye, Greenland, and Newcastle to model open enrollment impacts, set class size and space guidelines, and strengthen the programs that keep families choosing Portsmouth. Finally, great education is not optional. It really is essential to our kids' success and our community's future, and I'd be honored to earn your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Esther Kennedy.
Good evening, everyone. I want to thank the citizens for voter education for doing this great forum. My name is Esther Kennedy, and I have been called many things during my civic career: city councillor, port member, marina lady, kayak woman, and some might know me as Professor Kennedy. However, my favorites were wastewater woman and skate park dude, which I pleasantly responded, "No, I'm dudette to you." And of course, painin', I'll stop there. Tonight, I'm asking for your vote to be called Portsmouth School Board Member. In March, we were told by the city council and the school board that special education was the big reason the budget was so high. It was upsetting to me, they were blaming major budget increases on one part of our population. I was probably more incensed than many because I have spent 33 years in education, making sure our special needs population has been treated as equals and included. Portsmouth, we are spending too much money on children going out of our district. This is wrong in so many ways. These children will be coming home between 18 and 22 years of age with no connections to their community, no peers, and very limited support and resources. Sending children out of district has costed Portsmouth over $5.8 million. You ask, can this be changed? And the answer is yes. With proper inclusion, programming for all students, and I'm proud to say, in the school I work in, we have zero students in out-of-district. It's time to include all our school, students in our school and our community. For my second opinion, I first ran on city council, and one of my election points was to renovate the middle school. I was proudly voting, voted to renovate it. I'm asking your help to now renovate New Franklin. I was in a tour, and I support the project immensely. As a school board member, I will do what I need to support children, staff, and families. Please vote for me on November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. Genevieve Beckstead-Musk.
Good evening. I thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Genevieve Beckstead-Musky. Beckstead is my family name. Musky is my married name. I've been a resident of Portsmouth since I was 10. I attended Don Darrow Elementary School, Portsmouth Junior High, when I attended, and am a proud graduate of Portsmouth High School. I'm married to my husband, Sean, and we are proud parents of our daughter, Sloane. Currently, a freshman at Portsmouth High School who just finished her first season of volleyball and is looking very forward to her basketball tryouts. Currently, I am serving on the school board and have enjoyed my experience and would appreciate the opportunity to continue to give back to my community in this role. Portsmouth Public Schools are something our community can truly be proud of. We have passionate teachers, supportive families, and students who show up every day, ready to learn. But like schools, but like any school system, there are challenges we need to face together. One major challenge is the cost of out-of-district special education placements. Each year, the district spends, as Esther stated, around over $5 million sending students to programs outside of Portsmouth. These students deserve the best support possible, but this spending puts a real pressure on the resources and shows how important it is to strengthen the programs right here in our schools. Another challenge is the diversity of students, students' needs. Many students are disabled, mental health concerns, and are facing other vulnerabilities. Supporting them takes more time than just teaching. It requires planning, teamwork, and a community that cares. This is where community becomes essential. When families, teachers, and communities stay connected, we can spot challenges early, support our educators, and make sure every student has what they need to succeed. Open communication turns challenges into opportunities. By working together, staying engaged, and supporting our schools, we can help Portsmouth continue to provide every student the chance to thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Rappaport.
Hello, everyone. I'm Lisa Rappaport, and I am running for reelection to the Portsmouth School Board. I want to echo my thanks to the citizens for voter education for hosting us tonight. I have volunteered in school since my oldest, who's now a senior at PHS and homeworking on college applications tonight, was in kindergarten. I've served as the PTA president at Little Harbor, at the middle school, and at the high school. This has helped me build very strong relationships with many parents and families and teachers and administrators throughout the district. I'm running for reelection for the same reason that I volunteer, because I genuinely believe that our schools are able to transform lives and help build strong communities. During my time on the school board, I've pushed hard for transparency in our budgeting and in strategic planning and pushed for better communication. I've also advocated for students who are often overlooked, including English language learners, LGBTQ-plus students, and students with disabilities and learning differences. I have also founded our legislative committee and worked hard to advocate for Portsmouth in Concord and to ensure that we get fair school funding and have local control of our school curriculum. While there's a lot that's excellent about our schools, there are still many challenges ahead for our board to address. I agree with others that we need to take a look at our redistricting plan and do a better job of creating equal class sizes and equitable spaces across all of our schools. I agree we need to invest more in special education so that more students with disabilities can remain in our local schools instead of leaving our district. And I also think that we need budgets that prioritize curriculum improvements and teaching positions and the mental health and well-being of all of our students. I'm a first-generation American, a proud product of public schools and public universities, a small-business owner, and I moved here specifically because of our schools. I'm committed to maintaining excellent schools for my own kids and for future generations, and I hope to earn your vote on November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you, candidates. Again, because of the amount of questions we've had, at least for the first round, each individual candidate will answer one question. So the first question goes to Mr. Adler, and it's a, it's a deep question. No, it really is. How would you like the school department to handle a situation where a Jewish member of the basketball team was pressured by his teammates to join a Christian pair?
No, this is a question that actually the school board was talking about last night, and I know that they've been given legal advice. I'm not privy to that, but, you know, it's a challenge. The challenge with that question is that we have two constitutional things that we're looking at. We're looking at freedom of speech, and we're also looking at separation of church and state and the right to have prayer through, and freedom of speech is there, and yet it's critical that everyone be included. I, can I speak to the legal piece of it, or I can speak to my personal perception of it? My personal perception is simply that that student has a right to pray. I would hope that they would be encouraged to do that in a way that doesn't coerce or in any way make other students feel that they have to participate. I think what's critical in that situation is that the whole team can be together, work together, and that everyone feel included, and so whatever's done as a team is done in a way that doesn't separate one student from another.
Thank you. The next question is for Ms. Clayberg. The school budget is 50% of the overall city spending. Costs go up as enrollment goes down. Why and how will you fix this?
I think I'm probably the only person in Portsmouth that believes that our school population is, will go up. All the studies indicate that our school population will remain stable or maybe decrease slightly over the next 10 years. However, all the building that's going on in the city of Portsmouth right now, we have 19,000 units being built, and that doesn't include the Christmas tree shop or the shop behind Marshalls. 1,900 housing units are being built right now as we speak. I am totally convinced that families are going to be moving into our community, and that's going to affect the population of our schools. We have appointed a future building needs committee on our school board, and they are examining this issue. They're meeting with realtors, they're meeting with the planning board, and they're gonna hopefully, we will stay on top of who's moving into Portsmouth. And I, I just can't believe that there aren't going to be families moving in that have children that are going to be going to our schools. We have seen several, oops, sorry, from the, from the Yocans Development who are attending our middle school and high school. So they're trickling in at the moment, and that's how I would answer the question about future population in our schools.
Thank you. Brian French, this is the same question that was asked to the police commission. Have you benchmarked your organization against organizations in cities of comparable size such as Keene, New Hampshire, with a population of 22,000? If so, what did you find? Or did the board find?
Yeah, I don't think we've done a benchmark, but I would say that, you know, Portsmouth is pretty unique in a lot of ways. A lot of our teachers are very seasoned teachers. They have master's degrees, they have very specialized training, as well as they've been here a long time. So we spend a lot more on our teachers because of that, and when we recruit, we recruit those more seasoned teachers. I will say that I'd like to be able to have a new pipeline, just because I think we need a new pipeline of teachers. But I think it's not apples to apples. We're very, as the, as the police commission talked about, it's a destination city, there's lots of small business here, and lots of unique opportunities for kids and, and teachers as well. So I don't think, I think a benchmark would be useful, and we should definitely look into it, but I do think there's, it's, it's a very different communities.
Okay. And again, this is a question from, also that was asked to the police commission. There was much voter concern about the, at the meeting with city council candidates about costs and the $150 million city budget. What will you do to control, reduce costs in your department for the school board? Esther Kennedy.
Well, I pointed out one thing right off the bat. We do have $5.8 million in out-of-district and transportation costs for those out-of-district placements. I believe that we need to bring those children in-house. We need to create programs that are inclusive and supportive. I also think that you need to look at what we have for the number of staff we have. We need to look, as they retire, I encourage us to look at the positions and see if there's other people in-house with credentials that can support that, and do we really need those positions? I don't think we should let people go, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, as people retire or leave the school, we need to really have a discussion about whether that position is still needed, because as we know, one of the biggest costs is our employee costs. Thank you.
And to Genevieve. What is, although highly rated, what is needed to have Portsmouth City Schools become the number-one rated school district in the state?
I always freeze, sorry.
That's okay.
What's the number one? I mean...
What would, what would Portsmouth City Schools have to do to become the number-one rated school district in the state?
I say, continue to what we're doing. I mean, every year, the children get smarter, the teachers get better, the numbers grow. For me, it's just supporting what we have done, continuing to support the teachers, continuing to provide the children with the safe environment to work, to thrive. I'm sorry, that's my time.
Okay, the next question is for Lisa. How does the closure of the U.S. Department of Education affect, one, the support of our schools, two, IEPs, that is, any unexpected gaps?
That's a big question, and the short answer is, we have no clue, because the messages we're getting from Washington are changing hourly and happening on social media, and there have been no laws passed that have changed special education regulations, so quite honestly, we're operating in a vacuum. And I think our responsibility as a school board and as a district is to do the best we can to stay the course, support our teachers in their classrooms, make sure that our students get not just what's mandated, but what they truly need to thrive. And quite honestly, we're doing this without a lot of clear guidance from Concord or from Washington. I have a student with disabilities who has an IEP. I have another student on a 504 plan for a medical issue, and they have overall gotten really excellent support in our schools. And I hope that we find a way as a district to maintain that no matter what happens in Concord or in Washington, but it's not going to be easy, because if there's no Department of Ed, there's nobody to arbitrate whether we're following IEPs or 504s, there's nobody to fund grants that we need to support special education, and we have no idea what's going to happen next. So it's a good question, and honestly, I'm not sure.
The first question, these questions will be combined. The first question goes to Nancy Novaleen Clayberg. What are or will be the AI policies for the school board?
AI is certainly a challenge that all school boards are going to have to face. It's something that the school board will have to study closely with incredible input from staff, students, parents. That is something that we talk about, and, but we don't have any defined policy yet about what we'll do about that, but it certainly is a conversation that will come up and happen very, very soon. But yeah, it's a challenge. It has to be addressed, and we'll talk about that, I would guess, with this new board that comes, comes on, so stay tuned.
Steve Adler, your thoughts on AI policies you'd like to see proposed or you've thought about?
You know, I think the biggest critical issue with AI is it's, it's like a lot of tools that are out there. It can be used well, or it can be incredibly destructive. One of the problems with AI, they, you know, as we, as we're aware, the students are doing written assess, written assignments, they could easily... assignments, they could easily cheat. I mean, that's just a concern across the board. The flip side is, AI can be really valuable for, as a staff tool, for curriculum development. AI can be really valuable for children to get individual feedback. I think what's going to be really important for AI is, one, is that our teachers get training across the board, that there be common professional development for all of our teachers and how to use it well. It's like any tool, it can be used poorly or it can be used well. The other critical piece with AI is that with AI, we want to make sure that kids are still learning how to write and that kids are still learning how to think. And that's one of the risks with AI is that that could be taken, that if kids become too dependent on it, they won't use it well. So we need to support good uses of it.
Okay, thank you. Next question will be first to Esther Kennedy and then to Brian French. Education Freedom Accounts or School Vouchers will be implemented this fall, I think, or in the next year. Is there any indication that if a child leaves, comes back to the school district after using one of these school vouchers, that that money will follow them back to their school district?
That's an excellent question. It's one that in the Guilford schools, we're trying to ask right now. What has happened, for those who don't know, the Education Freedom Accounts allows people to homeschool, go to different schools, and get a portion, a subsidy from the state. And that subsidy can use for anything from textbooks to books to actually attending, paying to attend a school. The dilemma goes is if a child is being homeschooled or goes to one of these schools, when they come back, does that money go back to the state? And there's no clear explanation of that. And we're all trying to figure out educational freedom accounts, and we're also looking at laws to see what else will be coming down the pike and whether we have to look at maybe sharing students to one school or another, which is a new bill that has come forward again. So it's very new, we're all trying to figure it out, but I think we, it's safe to say there's a lot of money being spent on educational freedom accounts.
Thank you. The same question to Brian French.
Yeah, I think you said it well. I think there's lots of questions on how this is all going to work, and I don't think we know exactly how it's going to work yet. So I think as a board, you know, we definitely would have to stay on top of this one. It definitely will, you know, we look at our budgets holistically, so seeing how this will come into play and how it will affect our budgets is very important for a board to look at.
Thank you. The next question is over here, and we'll start with Lisa. The high school will be, is looking for a new principal. What qualities will you be looking for in that new principal?
I'm actually the board member on the search committee for the new principal, so--
I actually did not know that. I just--
In the interest of full disclosure, that's maybe not a fair question, but I will say the one thing that we have heard loud and clear so far from our teachers and our kids is that they want somebody who's going to listen to them and who's going to be willing to have compromise and conversations and lead while building consensus in a building where people need to work together every day in the best interest of kids. So I'm not an expert in education. My dad was an English teacher, but I don't have that background. So I'm not going to be in a position to judge what's the specific credential, what's the pedagogy that they need to bring to setting a curriculum. But we, at the end of the day, need somebody who can lead a strong community, who can listen, who can take feedback, who can make everybody in the building feel like they belong there, they're valued, and they're welcome. And I think no matter what the other credentials are, that is very important.
Thank you. The same question to you, Genevieve.
I'd have to echo Lisa. Definitely, if hired people, employed individuals, over my many years and throughout my career, you look for someone who is going to meld into what's established. You want somebody that's going to not just come in and make a name for themselves, but also be part of the community that they're being added into. You want someone that's going to listen, take direction at the same time of taking, sorry, taking information from other people and putting it out there, making decisions. So it's definitely got to be someone who is open to supporting their community, listening to the students, supporting the teachers. It's a very supportive role.
Thank you. Now, in this third and final round, we're going to ask the candidates to answer a question from one of the first two rounds that they didn't get that they would like to answer. We'll start with Steve Adler.
Sure. So--
I can reread them, too.
I wrote them down, thank you. The question that actually kind of intrigued me was, how do we make Portsmouth number one? And my answer is, you know, I think we have incredibly talented staff in the Portsmouth schools, but what would help us to get to be even stronger schools is to look at, how do we support our staff working together? How do we help them provide, have professional development that brings common practices across the board? Like, for instance, you asked me the question about AI. With AI, I talked to a teacher at the high school the other night, and he had out of his own volition gone and gone professional development in AI, but that wasn't common across the board. I think it's critical that there be training across the board on what are the best practices. I think that that's going to be a really challenging tool to work with, and that having all the teachers trained in common ways is important. I also think that one of the things that sometimes drives parents crazy is if they go from one classroom to another and teachers assess kids in vastly different ways. They want to make sure they understand why is there such a difference. I think it's important to look at common assessments, ways that students can learn in similar fashion, and how teachers can share information across the board. So you really continue to provide high-quality professional development and good coordination between teachers so they learn from each other. Thank you.
Thank you. Nancy?
I would like to talk about the AI a little bit and just, I think people might not realize what the three functions of the school board are. We set our budget, we hire our superintendent, and we set policy. So those are the three functions of the school board. And Pip Clues is here, she's the chairman of our policy committee. Our policy book is this thick, it's huge. We have a policy for just about anything anybody can do in the Portsmouth schools. So AI, I think, will become a very, very important part of that policy. It will go through the policy committee, which is made up of Pip and then two other school board members, and then it goes to the full board after we do the process where we talk to parents, students. So I just wanted to explain how the policy works, because policy really dictates everything we do on our school board, and it's a lengthy process. Oftentimes, we might have our legal team come in to talk about how we should handle various policies, but AI will certainly be an important one and one that we will address very soon, right, Pip?
Technically, you did get that on the first round. That's okay.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
I'll go again if you want.
Brian French?
I'll continue the thread on AI. Actually, I've been in tech for a long time, I'm a tech leader, and I've actually in AI. So definitely, I think AI is a very powerful tool. I think it can be used or abused pretty easily, and I do think it's really important for Portsmouth to figure out how we're going to, how we're going to use it, adopt it in the schools, because other schools around the country are starting to do that. And it's clear that there are kids that are just using AI wholesale, they're just taking out whatever it spits out, not thinking for themselves, but in other cases, it's a, can be a very powerful tool to organize thoughts and think about different ways to attack a problem. So it, just like the calculator, when I was a kid, nobody was allowed to have a calculator, but in the real world, you have a calculator, in the real world, we have AI. So kids need to, and teachers need to know how to use it responsibly. It's not going away.
Thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
Yeah, I'm going to talk about the principal position, because I think that also goes along with great schools. It takes a great leader to understand the culture they're working in, to understand the community, what the expectations are, and also to understand their staff and really get to know that those people, listen to them, be open to the people, and to accept all children. One of the things I worked really hard is to get the skateboard park, because we needed something for all children. I also believe that a good principal will have understanding our mental health crisis and understand the way New Hampshire works. We work very differently, we're a local control, a lot of principals that come from other communities outside the state don't understand that. And it's very interesting to watch the success and how, how long it takes for them to understand. So I encourage that we hire someone that is effective in our curriculum but understands Portsmouth. Thank you.
Genevieve?
I'm going to echo the first part of the room with AI, because it is something that it's there, it's not going away. Presently, my company is introducing it into our systems, so in a business sense, it's useful, it's a positive resource, but it is not all-knowing. That's where our teachers come in, to identify. I mean, I just finished my college, I received my degree very recently, received my bachelor's degree just before I turned 50, and very proudly, thank you very much. But in doing that, I had teachers that still, I mean, they watch for that information, they monitor you, you know, if it doesn't sound like you, it's not you. They can tell these things. So where it is, it's a tool, it's a tool to be utilized. It's not going away. I'll echo Brian, and it's, it is here. It's a positive, it's a positive tool, and to not be afraid of it, learn how to use it properly.
Lisa?
I'm not going to talk about AI, just to switch things up a little bit. I want to circle back to what it takes for us to have a number-one school, because I think that means a lot of different things to a lot of people. I'm not a big fan of rating our schools just on how well kids do on standardized tests, because that's teaching to a test and not really teaching our students to be functional human beings in the real world. But I do think that there are things that we can do as a board through the way we set our budget, through the way that we steer our strategic planning, that can support always improving the quality from what is already excellent to make it even better. I think that we need to do annual performance reviews for everybody who works in our schools and give them the kind of constructive feedback that can help them constantly improve. Our teachers are excellent, and they want that feedback, and we need to do a better job of giving it to them. I also think we need to do a better job of including all students regardless of whether they have learning differences or other disabilities into the main curriculum even more than we already do, because that elevates the experience for everyone. And I think what we all want at the end of the day is to be where I am right now with a senior at home applying for what they want to do next in college and know that we've prepared them well, and that they feel like what they learned can get them out into the world, into the beginning of the life that they want.
Thank you, candidates. We will now start the one-minute closing statements. We'll start with Steve Adler. I'm just leaving the podium briefly, because I need to get gen jumps. So I would just ask that you all just remain where you're sitting and just deliver your closing statement. Thank you.
Good, thank you. As a retired principal, teacher, guest lecturer at UNH, I've had experiences creating budgets. I've hired and evaluated teachers, I've helped to write and develop curriculum, and I've also done a lot of communicating with parents in the community. I'm committed to using my experience to work with others to achieve three goals. One is to support great teaching in Portsmouth. The second is to ensure that learning takes place in real classrooms, not hallways or closets. And the third is to make sure that we invest every school budget dollar towards student learning. I do want to let you know that if you select to vote for me, you will enable me to follow in my daughter's footsteps, because when she was in high school, she was the student rep on the school board. I also want to thank all of my family and friends and neighbors who have encouraged me to run and have really gotten out of their way to support me, and I really appreciate it. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you. Nancy Novaleen Kleberg.
I would like to thank the citizens for voter education for organizing this event tonight. As I mentioned earlier, I've been around for a long time, and this group has sponsored these forums for, did you say 40 years?
About almost 40 years.
Forty years. That's incredible. Thank you for your caring and dedication. Portsmouth is a special place. I am, I am a visitor assistant at the kiosk in Market Square for the Chamber. Tourists from all over the world visit our city, and we get very high marks from them. We offer interesting history, as you all know, provide a wide variety of cultural opportunities, and our restaurants and shops are endless. When a visitor asks what it is like to live here, I could talk forever. And when they ask about the quality of our schools, I could again talk forever. I am proud of what our city offers with many of its services and its commitment to our schools has made us among the best in the state of New Hampshire. Our school board is hardworking, dedicated, and committed to maintaining this status. I ask for your vote next Tuesday so I can continue to be part of this journey. Thank you.
Thank you. Brian French?
Yeah, thank you. I alluded to, you know, growing up in socioeconomic difficulties, but did, you know, teachers did make a big difference in my life, and I think one of the most important things that I learned was how to learn. The teachers that taught me didn't teach me how to memorize anything. I was very terrible at memorizing, but they taught me how do you reason and think about problems. And I think there's a, there is a movement in Portsmouth, especially around the curriculum alignment, to make our schools number one, and to helping kids really reason and think and for themselves as opposed to memorization, which, by the way, is a very common practice around the world. Although their test scores are really high, they still can't reason and organize the way that, to be real creative people that build businesses and build technology. Thank you.
Thank you. Esther Kennedy?
Good evening, thank you, everyone. As a public school administrator for 27 years and a graduate professor for 20, I have sat on many statewide and national committees. I've worked on national questions for math exams, as well as being an expert testifying for special education. I have certifications in science, social studies, and special ed. In our public schools, I know how to work with the school board as a team member, since I have been one for 27 years. During this time of chaos in the public education world, I can bring to the school board knowledge of laws, grants, and curriculum that will help the team navigate through these turbulent times. I will always be available for our students, staff, and families, yet I also know and respect the role of the school board to the school community. We must remember that last week before, because of a federal cut, we now only have two people working in our special needs department at the national level. We do not know what's next. I ask you to learn from me, take my expertise, and vote for me on November 4th. Esther Kennedy. Thank you.
Thank you. Genevieve Bexedd Muske.
I have chosen to run for this position to continue to serve my community. I come from a family that gives themselves to our community. My mother worked for the Chamber, where I stuffed envelopes, managed stages at Market Square Day, sold T-shirts at the arrival of the Albacore, and made balloon arches in very cold weather for First Night. My father served several years on the HTC. I have a brother who served on the city council. I have another brother who served in the Marine Corps, giving to his country. I come to you with a promise to be a voice that listens. I am pleased to offer my time to the city school, to the city school board, and appreciate your vote on Tuesday.
Thank you. Lisa Rappaport?
Well, thank you again, Beth, and to everyone who came tonight and asked such great and honestly quite difficult questions. I think we're fortunate to live in a city where our voters and our community is so well-educated, and I would venture to say that every single one of us sitting up here is here-- And I would venture to say that every single one of us sitting up here is here because of a good teacher and a good school. So I think our schools need strong leadership and during my time on the board, I've pushed for more transparency and accountability in how we establish our budget and how we set our policies. And that's something I will continue to do. We have so many things that are uncertain right now in Concord and in Washington about not just education policy, but about so many other things that affect our students and our families and our teachers. We have families that can't afford food, we have families that are not going to be able to afford healthcare, and all of this has a spillover effect in our public schools that we are going to have to manage increasingly. So we have a hard job and our job is to support our teachers so that they can do it well. I hope that going forward, we are able to chart a course in Portsmouth that uphold our community values and keeps our schools rigorous and inclusive no what, no matter what happens in Concord or in Washington. And I hope to earn your vote. Thank you.
Thank you. And I will read the closing statement by Jen Schump, who was out trick-or-treating, although I guess she's done by now. "Thank you for the opportunity to include my remarks this evening. While I couldn't be here in person, my commitment to the students, families and educators of Portsmouth is unwavering. I'm running for the Portsmouth School Board because I believe in our teachers, our students and the strength of this community. As an educator, a mom and an advocate, I see what's possible when schools are built on strong instruction, genuine belonging and trust between families and educators. I welcome questions and conversations from anyone in our community. You can connect with me on my campaign Facebook page where I'll be answering questions publicly and continuing the conversation about how we can strengthen our schools together. I would be honored to earn your vote." And again, that is Jen Schump. This concludes tonight's forum. Thank you to the candidates, thank you to the public for attending. Special thanks to city staff for their inexhaustible assistance and please remember to vote on November 4th. Thank you.